I'll call the study session for the Newport Beach City Council for November 24th to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Webb is absent.
Okay. First item on our agenda is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Daigle?
I think it's, is it S-23, the eat quack appointment?
Yeah.
You probably want to make it all at Reno. I think one of them says at No One. Okay, just maybe correct that.
Councilwoman Gardner?
None, thank you.
Councilwoman Hen?
I have none.
Councilwoman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor pro Tim Curry?
None, thank you.
Okay, I have none. Does staff have any?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I just wanted to go through a couple of things that will be pulled from tonight for various reasons, some for, that can be placed back on there and clarified. Let me go through those with you and for the audience. One is number seven. We're going to ask that that be removed from the consent calendar. You have a substitute recommended action that takes out and defers until January 12th the language relating to the inclusionary housing in Luffy. Secondly, the next one on my list is item 16, I want to have a little discussion with you about the fire truck purchase and what that means and what the next steps are. So we'll do that tonight. Finally, 18, I'm recommending that you continue that item. We have some additional discussion I'd like to have with the restaurant bid and related to Restaurant Week. And then finally, item 23 is a public hearing. It's not a consent item, but we're going to ask that that be continued. And you caught the correction on Mr. Reno's appointment. And then finally, just for the audience, item 25, the recommendation is a continuance, and that relates to the Yellowstone hearing. So if anyone's listening at home, that is scheduled to be heard, not tonight, but Wednesday, December 2nd at 6:00. And I know the mayor will reiterate that tonight as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kiff. Councilman Webb?
I had three items. Start with item five on the construction maintenance projects ordinance. If I remember correctly, the, and I think it was well accomplished, thing that I was concerned about on that was that in after the period when somebody already has something under construction and the six months comes up, and he has to have issued a, another permit to go forward, I wanted to make sure that it was possible for the planning director to issue up to six months rather than have to issue a permit for six months. I think it, I think it reads that.
Okay. We'll certainly get that clarification.
That was one of the things I was.
That just reminds me too, when we have something like this, it surely would be helpful if we had underlining. I had to pull them out.
Strike out and underline?
Yeah, I had to pull them out and go side by side.
Okay.
Okay, and then on item seven, having to do with the lot line adjustment that it caused or that would allow for reorientation of lot lines, I thought that our direction was that we were going to leave that alone and, and not allow it rather than, it looks like to me that we've allowed it with conditions, but I'm not quite sure how that, how that would solve the problems of reorienting something that would require on-street parking removal and relocation of, instead of having alley access, having on-street access.
Mr. Lebo?
Mayor, members of city council, we put the provision in there that requires a zone change if you want to reorient the frontage to address that side yard, street side meets front yard of adjoining lot issue. If you follow that, you would need to have council approval as well as planning commission recommendation to do that. If you don't want to have that option, you can just take the two provisions out to deal with the zone change.
I don't know. I was under the impression we just weren't going to include that as in the lot line adjustment. But what you're really saying is that, that it's still allowed, but it would have to have city council and planning commission approval, and you'd have to have a zone change. Is that just to get the, the little square cut out where the, the front yard setback would be only good for half of the lot or whatever it is?
Two things. We did go back after the study session and looked at the tape. And in fact, Councilmember Webb, you indicated that you wanted there to be some hearing provision, public hearing provision if that were going to happen. And because also, I knew there was the concern, again, of the street side, side yard of the lot that's reoriented being adjacent to the front yard of the next lot in.
Right.
Because when you reorient, reorient the frontage, you necessarily go to the default position, I think Mr. Hen was talking about, where you reorient the lot, but then you have to have a 20-foot setback and it leaves virtually no room for the building. This way, we thought if we had both the public hearing before the planning commission and then the zone change, if there were some extraordinary circumstance that we hadn't identified, you can go ahead and do it, although it's going to be rare. And you would still have to comply with those provisions about alley access. Does that make sense to you?
I know, I looked at the same thing.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, let me, which part did you get?
I'm not sure whether or not we need to discuss that further or if I'm satisfied with that. It's, in other words, it's, it's got the public hearing access, I mean, so that what happens, it would come to us, and you make us be the bad guys if, if we don't think it's appropriate for the neighborhood.
That's pretty much how we looked at it, yes, sir.
All right. I think that clarifies that. And then the other item was having to do with the Restaurant Week, and I agree with postponing that. However, one of the things is, I didn't realize that we were having to waive city council policy to allow for this larger contract. And I question whether we need to go forward with waiving it for two Restaurant Weeks. It seems like to me that we could issue the contract to cover the next Restaurant Week, just fine, or go through the RFP, RFQ process after that Restaurant Week, have that done to where we're ready to award a contract the 1st of July. They would still have July, August, September, and part of October to get geared up for that. Whereas right now, we're issuing a contract where it goes out in, well, really December, and they only have December and half of January to get ready for the next Restaurant Week. So I'm going to probably, when it, I'd like that some way or another discussed when it comes back.
Mr. Webb, Sharon may want to chime in too, because she has more direct contact with CMC. The, that's my direction, that's my thought too, as to where we should go. There's obviously a Restaurant Week planned for January. We don't want to upend that, but immediately at the end of that period, again, potentially the end of January, we, we should rethink what happens from here so that you don't have to be put in a position of waiving the no-bid requirement.
The other part of that is if we can do that and get in cycle.
Yes, with the fiscal year.
Then that means we end up having two Restaurant Weeks in the same fiscal year rather than having to budget for a Restaurant Week that's in the next fiscal year.
That's our goal too. Sharon, if you have additional information for us?
I'm sorry I'm late, but I was on the phone with CMC. I, I think that if the council, what I'm gathering, Councilmember Webb at least, is leaning towards is having the contract that's before you now terminate at the end of January. So I think that we would need to continue the item to rework the budget, because I don't think that we can divide those costs up just between now and this evening's meeting. So then that would give the city the opportunity to issue an RFP for the October 2010 Restaurant Week and if there is to be another one the following January. But I don't think it will help us with the fiscal year problem, because the planning for the October event has to start before July. In fact, Peggy Fort was just telling me that she's already started doing some work on the October event as she's working on the January event. So, you know, lining up people to be sponsors for, for the two.
I'm sure that we can always come up for, with an excuse and reason why it should be done, but it, it seems like to me that we have plenty of time to.
I, I think terminating it in, in January and starting afresh, if you will, for the October event will work, but I still have a feeling that to plan it properly, it would have to start sooner than July 1st.
Ms. Mayor?
But, but we can work that out as we're doing the RFP.
Councilwoman Daigle?
On to this work that's being done, part of which is to upload a lot of information on a website, restaurant menus and so on, does that become the property of the city that we could transfer in the future, or how does that work?
I don't believe that work is being uploaded onto the city's website.
No, not the city's website, but if you look at Restaurant Week and you'll see menus, you know, you click on Sage, and it'll come through what all the menus are, which takes, I would assume it's the city's tax dollars or the bid dollars that are being paid to do this work.
I assume so, but the major part of the work is with the marketing and the sponsorships and the publicity.
The Restaurant Association bid has its own website, and that website is about to launch a redesign. And the website and the other materials that are developed for, for the Restaurant Bid, and those materials developed for Restaurant Week are, in the contract spelled out, as being property of the bid and therefore property of the city. So, yes, there are some of the links on the bid site that go to Open Table, which is a private entity, which is separate and apart from that. But anything that's been created for the bid and our Restaurant Week is our property.
Okay. Anything else? Councilwoman Webb?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lebo was whispering in my ear as to the other answer to, an answer to one of Mr. Webb's other questions related to, it's item five. He says it is issued for a period of no longer than six months, so it can be anything up to that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it was, it wasn't a fixed six month, that it'd be an adjustable.
Okay. Okay. Wow. Well, this is an indication. Councilwoman Hen, do you have something?
Did you ask him if I had any?
Oh, I did. Oh, yeah.
I did.
All right. We'll get on to our second item on the agenda, which is the Recreation Contract Instruction Overview.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Laura Detweiler, Director of Recreation and Senior Services. And our goal this afternoon is to give you an overview of the Recreation Contract Instructor Program that our department manages. And we're doing this for a couple of reasons. One is that the program has seen great success and expansion over the last couple of years. But also, there's been a tremendous amount of interest in being a contract instructor here in Newport Beach with the downturn in the economy. We were seeing about maybe 10 instructor proposals coming in a couple of years ago on a quarterly basis. We're now seeing 40 to 50 come in as people are looking for different ways to make some different income. So, and, and as you can imagine, with those numbers, we're having to turn some folks away, and that's creating some frustration. So, we wanted to educate you as the council and educate our community about this process. What we've recently done is expanded our instructor webpage that will be somewhat of a one-stop-shop, where our existing instructors can come and get forms, get access to their rosters. But those that are prospective instructors can tap into this presentation that we're going to show you today to answer any questions that they have about it. And you as council can point that to them as well if you're questioned also. I do have a small army with me here today. Some of, some of them are here by choice. I think it's because it's, there's a great source of pride in success that we've had in this program. And each of them play a very important part in, in managing the process. But I do want to mention Sean Levin, Recreation Superintendent, and Matt Lor, Recreation Manager, are here. They helped put this presentation together and also helped manage our contract program and are here to help me out if I need a lifeline to answer any of your questions. So, without further delay, to start off, what, what is a recreation contractor? And, and these are independent contractors that work for our department. They essentially help us provide the diverse array of recreational programs for our community to spend their leisure time. They come in a couple of different forms, sole proprietors or individuals, to corporations that run programs across the state and even across the nation. They constitute 90% of the classes and camps that, that are shown in the Navigator that come to your homes on a quarterly basis. So it's a large portion of what we offer to the community. And essentially, they're the creators. They design and implement the course curriculum and content and the entire learning process as it applies to the certain discipline that, that we're offering through the many classes. Independent contractors in Newport Beach, they're required to, to sign an independent contractor agreement. This is a document that we review on an annual basis with the city attorney's office to make sure it's up to date. We work with over 120 instructors. They have an additional 100 employees that work for them to help them manage the programs that are being offered. They receive a pre-negotiated percentage of revenue comple, completed, excuse me, collected upon completion of a class, and that's based on participation numbers and those that register for the program. This percentage is, is based on a couple of things, their overhead costs, their staff, participant ratios, supplies, marketing materials, the insurance they need to obtain, and market prices. We want to make sure that it's affordable to the community. It's enough to cover their costs and pay for some of the overhead for city expenses. The percentages range from 60 to 75 for the instructor and on the other side, 25% to 40% for the city. This is pretty standard in the industry. I would say on average, it's a 65, 35% split. And at the same time, the instructors must obtain a Newport Beach business license while conducting business here in Newport Beach and at all times while they're working with us. What are the benefits of having independent contractors? Well, first, first and foremost, it's to help us to provide a diverse array of, of opportunities for our residents to spend their leisure time. And I think we're very successful at that based on the partnerships that we have with over 150 of those instructors. They're experts at what they do. They've got a specialized skill set. Although we, we are constantly adding new instructors, there's continuity and retention. And there's a lot to be said for that. We have some contractors that have worked with us for many years and have taught multiple generations and families. So they have established themselves here in the community and in many ways give back to the community as well. They help us create community by bringing people together and creating experiences. They do have to obtain their own liability insurance and list the city as an additionally insured. We always obtain the right to terminate their agreement if there's a breach in the contract. And classes are easily discontinued if we don't meet a minimum participation number. So, and that basically happens when the demand doesn't exist. So it's easy to bring those programs to a close when, when there isn't the interest. We offer a variety of classes and camps for all ages, preschoolers, youth and teen, adults, and the 50 and better age group. And they range anywhere from mommy and me classes to health and fitness, CPR and first aid. We've got all kinds of sports and extreme sports that engage the interest of our community members. As you're aware, we tap into all the facilities here in Newport Beach. Our community centers, which we truly have maximized with the Oasis Senior Center going down, we filled about, just about every room that we have in making sure that those programs are up and running and still trying to maintain the other classes and opportunities for all the other age groups. So, we use our city parks, tennis courts, ball fields, basketball courts. Our beaches and bays are always very popular with our sailing, surfing, volleyball, and day camps. The off-site locations, I, I think this is, this is the part that has made this program so successful, and it's what our staff really excels at. They think outside of the box in trying to find facilities to continue to offer programs and expand what we're, what we're offering. Some of the things that they've done just recently is worked closely with the school district and are using their facilities during the summer months when school's out of session to expand our camp programs. And that's been extremely successful. Using the Boys and Girls Club, private organizations, we're currently working with Sage School right now too, to expand our offerings by using some of the new facilities that they've just built there. So we're excited about that opportunity. The next couple of slides illustrate the volume of participation and revenue generated by our contractual programs. As you can see, there's been tremendous growth from '05, '06 up to '08, '09. They're broken down in categories from surfing and sailing to tennis, classes and camps, and then also the Oasis Senior Center. And you can see that there's been tremendous growth in participation and revenue and, and almost doubling over a four-year period.
There's also been a lot of growth in the overhead number. Are we recouping all those costs?
Overhead costs, we are, yes. And we've actually, if you look at direct costs, we're, we're covering those 100%. The city council through the user fee study had set a 75% cost recovery. We're actually recovering at 79% right now.
Laura, how much of the growth in revenue was attributable to the opening of the Newport Coast Community Center?
Quite a bit. And that actually occurred right here. So you see the jump we're attributing this year to that. And then I would think the, you know, the majority of the growth over here is truly related to the expansion of our camp programs. So, yeah, there was quite a bit of jump. And with, CYC is a good example of that too. We just renovated and, and opened that facility up, and we were able to add 70 additional sessions. So when we, when we make those types of improvements and open up facilities, our possibilities begin to grow. And, and certainly Oasis is something that we're looking forward to getting back online. And staff is already work, working on not only expanding program for the 15-plus category, but also we have used that facility in past years when it was up to offer programs for those of all ages during the evening and evening times as well. So we're, we're expecting quite a bit of expansion when we, when we open that facility back up. Great question.
Will all of the classes that were offered at Oasis before the renovation be, continue to be offered?
Correct. They will.
Okay, so there won't be any changes to existing program?
Correct.
Okay.
They will come back to the Oasis, and we will be expanding quite a bit.
Okay, thank you.
This, this is participation, so these numbers relate to the revenue as well. You can see in '05, '06, we were at around 7,300. That number has doubled. The growth has really come in our surfing and sailing program as well as our classes and camps. And I can't say enough about the staff. They, they continue to amaze me in their creativity. We work very closely with our partners, our contractors, who are very creative in, in making sure that they understand trends and have a pulse on the community and what they're looking for as well. What's the basis for a contract? What allows us to do this essentially? There's a couple of things that point to that. One of them is council policy and the other is municipal code. The next slide will talk a little bit about that. But this policy actually designates the Recreation and Senior Services Department to enter into such agreements to bring contractors on to provide recreational programs to our community. And then the municipal code, 10-8-30, talks about the use of public property for commercial purposes, and it essentially prohibits that unless you're authorized to do so. And that independent contractor agreement that I talked to you about allows us to do that. And it's actually this code that we use to cite when we're out in our facilities and our park patrol staff is out there monitoring. And when we find folks that I have not entered into an agreement with us and we're unable to get compliance from them, we'll begin the citation path to bring them into compliance. And then 11-4-10, this, this also speaks to what we're doing, and it authorizes our department as well and make sure that we're managing our facilities appropriately, that we take maintenance needs into account, that we're thinking about the impacts that we have on the residents surrounding those facilities, that there is adequate parking and restroom facilities, so we're not creating further issues when we start to program out these And then contracting procedures, how, how we go about managing this process. Although it may seem lengthy, it, it strives solely to provide safe programs for our community. And from, from start to finish, the instructor fills out an application form. They're available online. We call, we send them in the mail if someone calls and requests to be an instructor here in the city. We review those. We bring them in for interviews. We conduct reference checks. We develop the contracts. We talk about our policies and procedures and talk about logistics, location, fee, age range for the appropriate class size, dates, and times. We undergo background investigations. We work with our police department and the Department of Justice and do fingerprinting. We want to make sure those that are helping us are safe to be instructing the children that we're working with. We also require that they attend an annual instructor meeting and training. So we get them together on an annual basis and talk about what's important to us, what's important to them, talk about marketing methods to make sure that we're, we're reaching out to our community, that they're aware of, of what we're offering. And then, and then once the classes are up and running, our staff conducts audits on a regular basis just to make sure that, that we're offering quality programs to the community. And then to break that down a little bit farther, how do we actually make the selection of who will be one of our contract instructors? And that's based on a variety of things, the interview, the demand, is there a need out there? Are there trends? Are we seeing participation levels drop in a particular discipline like tennis or surfing or those types of things? And that the quality, the quality instructor, making sure that they've got the experience and education to teach the class, that they've got a, a good understanding of the program that they're offering, they understand our city values, that they're committed to a successful program, and they've got the, all the appropriate certifications and affiliations. And schedule, do we have the facilities to accommodate what, what they're looking for to offer their program? And this is, this is a lot of times where we get hung up, is because we've really maximized our buildings. And, and although we have an expansive park program, there are some limitations. I talked a little bit about restrooms and parking, and, and those are on the top of the list when we're programming facilities and making sure that we've got the appropriate accommodations to, to meet their needs. And then we work with other departments too, to make sure that we're safely programming the beach fronts and also our parks as well. And then we also look at their references. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the recreation program.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Do you make a distinction between classes and individuals? I'm probably thinking about the public, the use of public property. Because, I mean, there are lots of individual trainers, personal trainers, that I see running up and down the steps of this and using that. And do we care about that, or is it only when you get a certain mass that you, that we intervene, or what?
We do care about that. And, and if, if we come across those individuals, we talk to them about the process and ask that they fill out a contract application so we can determine whether or not we can accommodate them as one of our independent contractors. So we do care about that. That's something that our park patrol staff looks for when we're, when we're out there. We do get calls from the community as well complaining, they're, they're clogging up, you know, the stairway or the pathway. And so when we get those types of calls, we go out and talk with those individuals and try to bring them into compliance.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Rosansky?
Yeah, hi. I imagine that this came to us because of conversations that we've had in the past. And I've And I've had, for better or for worse, contact from mostly surf instructors who have been wanting to use the surf zone to teach surf classes. But in talking with, about this, you know, it, it seems that if you want to operate any kind of a class in the city, you have to do it under this system. There's no other system. They can't just come, get a business license and, or, or if they want to offer a class and not advertise in the Navigator or things like that. I mean, that's, that's the only system that we have here for operating classes or instructional type things.
Our fee schedule does offer some rental of our facilities. The beachfront is not something that we rent out, so that, that would be an issue for the surf instructors, but we do have some rental fees where you can come and rent out a, a structure at one of our parks and some park space. But it is rather expensive, and most times when we talk to folks about that, they prefer to enter into the independent contractor agreement with us. And they enjoy the benefits of working with us as well and the advertisement they get through the Newport Navigator, and, and it's a very powerful document, it's well done and generates a tremendous amount of interest.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand that, but there's some people that may have their own network or whatever, or their ways of advertising, that they don't really care to maybe put it out to the public there, maybe they have a certain clientele or whatever that they want to approach.
So the rental fees would be an avenue for them.
And then that's mostly just for like rooms and things? I mean, it's, well, like-
Rooms, and we do have some fees associated with park space, but we do, we would scrutinize that. We'd want to make sure that there's adequate parking and restrooms and those types of things if we're programming out, programming out those facilities.
And so you basically are, in a sense, rationing our resource out to the people that want to come to us?
We are.
And do, do individuals who work with the city in the past have priority over new people come in, or is it the clocks start over every year, or how, how does that work?
It, it does not start o, over every year. I did talk a little bit about continuity and retention, and we, we get great demand from our residents from some of these instructors that have worked from us, for us for years. One of the things that we're talking about in preparation for the Oasis opening is, is doing an RFP, a call for sessions, as, if you will, that will advertise, you know, the ability to be a contract instructor with us. And so, once we go through that process, we're going to see how that works, it'd be new territory for us, but what we might look at is for some of the larger areas of programming, let's say surfing or some of our camps, we may look at doing an RFP for that as well. That would open it up to those that are interested, creates a little bit of friendly competition, keeps costs down, and, in our opinion, would create improved service. But it's new territory for us, and it's some, but it is something that we're looking at.
Well, it'd seem only fair, I mean, it's a public resource that we're doling out, basically, and I would think that should be open to, there should be a way for people to get in that have not been in before, either because they didn't do that kind of thing, or they did it in another city, or for whatever reason.
And because of that, I think the RFP process would be helpful. And, and we take things, a lot of things into consideration, the success of their program. So I would say, to answer your question, those that have been with us for a long time may, may be more favorable throughout that process, but certainly would open the opportunity for everyone to apply and be part of the process.
I guess, what bothers me a little bit is just the fact that the city, through our Recreation Department and you and people who work under you, are, are making decisions about people and, you know, like, let's say the guy wants to come in and have a class, it's only three people, and you decide, well, you need 10 people or else, forget it, you can't have your class. And it just doesn't seem fair that, that people, you know, what, I mean, why, what do we care sometimes? I mean, if that's what they want to do and it's their time and, and they want to make the effort to do it, why would we care?
I could see in a surfing situation where we would care, because every time we take up a class, the surfing section, that's less surfing for the public, so in that case-
No, I, I'm not talking about just surfing, I'm saying just in general, there's other types of classes. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, hundreds of classes are things that we offer, not just surfing. But yeah, I mean, I understand that there's a resource and you want to maximize the resource, I mean, that makes sense to a certain degree.
I don't think we have a whole lot of disagreement in, in terms of that, you know, I, these instructors, this is, this is their living, and they, they want to make sure that they're maximizing their time as well. So I think if it's within reason, obviously if you're having a surf class, lower numbers for safety purposes is, is a reasonable request. So, we take those things into consideration, definitely.
Uh-uh. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Dugan?
Are there other city models out there that may be more flexible with how people can utilize fields? Have you looked around at other cities?
We're, the process that we use is very universal throughout all agencies, so it's very, we, we all use the same process. I've worked for five different agencies and it's very similar. This, this is by far the most extensive recreation contract program I've ever worked with, and so I think our staff do a tremendous job in managing it.
And then the overhead number of 426,000, does that include park maintenance too, which I think runs in the millions?
I'm, I'm sorry, what number are you referring to?
Your, your, your overhead number of 426,000?
The overhead number, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding-
Back, back into your class fees.
She's wanting to know if, if you include the cost of maintaining parks and things like that in your overhead numbers, because you're just talking about people and paper and things.
I believe those costs were considered when the user fee study took place.
Okay, so they were factored in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Hen?
Just a question, have we had lots of complaints or problems from people, either existing or would-be instructors?
No, we, we had a couple-
Not across my desk, but I just wondered what your experience is.
We had, we had two issues this summer, and it was related to surfing. And, and that's something that we work very closely with the fire department and our lifeguards, and, and we have a really nice aerial that maps out the entire beachfront, and there are areas that aren't safe for surfing. A lot of the instruction is for beginners, and, and so again, you need to take that into consideration when you're programming the beachfront. We also need to take into consideration the drop-in use and the large number of people that are attending our beaches during the summer months. So, we've mapped that out, and we've got five different surf instructor vendors that we're currently working with right now, and we sat down with the lifeguards and talked about if there was any more room to add any more instructors, and there simply is not. And we, we really feel like that we've tapped into as much as we can during the summer months, taking all things into consideration and making sure that we're not programming unsafe conditions.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Laura. Good presentation, learned a little bit there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, then, before we leave this item, is there an interest on the council's part to leave this status quo versus maybe where Mr. Rosansky is going is to have some other type of mechanism, like you pay a certain percentage of, for a one-time or a private class? So, I, I just, we're, I, I'm willing to discuss with Laura going down that path and with the city attorney, but I don't want to do that if there isn't an interest on council.
Well, I, I guess my point is that it just doesn't seem fair to force people into this business model apparently that we've set up with the Navigator and, and all that, if that's, if they're not interested in that. I mean, if there's availability of space in the parks or the beach or our community centers or whatever, and they want to have their own private little class, or they want to use our facilities, and, and we can charge them to do it, I don't have a problem with that. Obviously, there's a cost associated with it, and we, we should recover that, you know, but I, it seems that to force them into, I mean, you force them into that model, it just doesn't seem fair. And, and in a sense, we, you know, if we don't open the process up to others to be able to get in, if it's constantly just re-upping the people that are there, we've created these little monopolies where people just don't have an opportunity to, to, you know, I mean, it's not like you can go out and find a, a private beach, have a surf class. I mean, we have a monopoly on the beach, and so if we don't allow others to use our monopoly, then, you know, we're just as guilty, I think, you know, as, as anybody else, so.
And so maybe the RFP process will help with that. And so we'd like to go through that with the Oasis and see how that works, and then look at that and, and how that applies to the Recreation Division classes that we're doing as well. And that would provide opportunity for, for everyone to apply.
I mean, I, I don't think it's necessary that everybody be a subcontractor for the city, quite honestly. I mean, I don't know why they would have to. If they just want to rent a room, have a class-
As long as they provide the appropriate liability.
Appropriate license, have insurance or whatever, and that we're covered, I mean, what, what do, I just don't see the reason to do that, so.
The complaints that I get are along the lines of people go to the beach with their trainer, and the city says, hey, you can't do that, and approaches them. That tends to rub people the wrong way, and, I mean, the feedback they give me is, you know, I paid taxes, I had, you know, why can't I go with my trainer to the beach? And the city confronts us, and it's more of that kind of dynamic that I've been hearing about.
Understood, and of course, the challenge is sort of where do you draw that line? That one trainer with one client is great, but one trainer with six clients, then you start to look at a class, so that's a tough one, but I hear you, I've heard that too.
And we get, we get complaints on the other side of that as, situation as well, because those trainers are dominating in some areas, and, and especially down at the beachfront, and that's where we see the majority of it. And it's difficult to just, you know, walk with your stroller or walk down the sidewalk because some of the activity that's taking place, that, that's not truly permitted.
Councilman Curry?
Well, and, and I agree, you know, that's the same issue that exists with the photo permits, because sometimes we have, you know, all of Coron del Mar beaches clogged with people doing wedding photos, and we have a, a permit process for that, just as we do for anybody using a city facility to carry on a commercial business. And that's so that we could get a handle on it and keep a handle on it. Let me ask you this, if somebody called you and said, I want to rent a room at the community center at Newport Coast, and I'm going to pay you for it for, you know, pick a day, October 27th, we'd rent them the room, wouldn't we?
We would, and there is a commercial rate for that.
Right, so right now, anybody that wanted to do a one-time class or wanted to, you know, bring in people for whatever reason, advertised himself and not being in the Navigator, there's nothing stopping him from doing that, is there?
No.
And as it relates to like youth sports, I mean, those are pretty much all handled a program through the leagues, aren't they?
Correct, we work with, with the league presidents to allocate those fields, and, and that's a very scientific process and, and one that I think is working very well right now.
The science and art probably goes into that process too.
Right, right.
And that's not something you want to open up to, you know, random, you know, let's bump Pop Warner today because I want to, you know, have a field hockey game.
Not if we want to fill the council chambers with-
Exactly.
-Pop Warner moves.
Well, I think, and I think we're doing a pretty good job in terms of how we're, you know, maximizing utilization of our facilities, and so I, I think we've got the flexibility built into what we need to do, and maybe we should just advertise that flexibility more frequently.
Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, while I have the floor, I do want to thank my staff. They do a tremendous job in managing this, from working with our contractors and, and helping the public as they come in to register for these, register for these programs. So, I'm extremely proud of their efforts, and you can expect some great things in the near future here when we open up Oasis and can continue to expand the program that we've got going over at CYC. It's, it's, that's been a great project and money well spent, and our community's really enjoying it, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would add my accolades to the work that the staff does in parks and recreation. I think it's just tremendous, and given the thousands and thousands of people that you work with every year in this program, and the almost complete lack of complaint that comes across my desk, I'm regularly astounded at that. So, here to be congratulated on that.
Thank you, yes, silence is a good thing when, when we're talking about that, so, I agree. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone want to address the council on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is the Shell Hydrogen Station at Jamboree and San Joaquin Hills Road.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a request by Shell, actually, to spend some time before you to inform you about what they're proposing to do there at Jamboree and San Joaquin Hills, and this is Jim Martin approaching the podium, will make the presentation, if I have all my notes correct.
Okay, Mr. Kiff, and I understand that we notified all the residents in the area around the station of the study session this afternoon?
Yeah, I worked with Tara Finnegan, our Public Information Manager, to get the news out to the local HOAs that this was coming to their neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, city council members, good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to present an overview of Shell's proposal to build a hydrogen refueling station at our current station at the corner of San Joaquin and This first slide is what Shell likes to call the energy challenge. We call it the three hard truths. The first is that the world's need for energy is growing, fast. By the middle of the century, there could be more than nine billion people using twice as much energy or more. The second hard truth is that conventional oil and gas is becoming harder to find and produce. All of the easy fruit has been harvested, so. And the third hard truth is that, given today's technology, more energy use means more carbon dioxide emissions at a time when the climate can ill afford it. So, Shell sees hydrogen as part of a portfolio of solutions to meet these challenges. There's, there's no one silver bullet. We believe that we need to develop all of a portfolio of alternative fuels. So, in supporting this project, the city of Newport Beach can play an important role in providing its residents with alternative transportation solutions. The auto manufacturers are expected to deploy first hundreds of fuel cell vehicles and subsequently thousands of fuel cell vehicles in the Newport Beach Irvine area. This station is seen as a, as a critical part in supporting the infrastructure to keep these vehicles moving. It also means that it would help reduce the local smog emissions and contribute towards solutions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. This represents a, a map of the California Fuel Cell Partnership's action plans, which Shell Hydrogen is a member. The California Fuel Cell Partnership is a group of energy companies, auto manufacturers, equipment manufacturers, and industrial gas companies, all working together to, to solve the infrastructure and the deployment of fuel cell vehicles. First of all, California leads the world in hydrogen fuel cell vehicle demonstration programs. There's more fuel cell passenger vehicles and buses in California on the roads than any other region in the world. California also has the most hydrogen refueling stations. You've probably all heard of Schwarzenegger's Hydrogen Highway, but in reality, it looks more like a cluster concept. So, you can see that the, the green circles are the first hydrogen communities, and they primarily are in the West Los Angeles, Santa Monica area, in the Torrance area, and then also in the Newport Beach Irvine area. The blue ones are the second communities, and then the, the purple ones are the connector communities. So, these are designed to match the deployment of the fuel cell vehicles.
So, on that map, how many are actually in existence today?
There's, there's approximately a dozen and a half stations in California.
In all of California?
Correct.
So there's quite a few of the circles on that map have yet to be developed, is that right?
So, Shell is investing time and resources to develop a portfolio of new fuels. Hydrogen is a, a component, along with other alternative fuels, such as biofuels, both first and second generation, and gas to liquids. These new fuels will be part of an energy mosaic or the portfolio of solutions that I discussed, with, with no single fuel being the silver bullet. Shell Hydrogen has nine stations across the world. We're the only major energy company to do this in three key markets, Europe, Asia and the United States, and Newport Beach will be the 10th station. Some of these are part of retail gasoline stations, and others are just behind the fence or standalone hydrogen stations. The clusters of, of hydrogen filling stations will play an important role in bridging the gap between hydrogen demonstration projects and commercialization. Right now, the hydrogen fuel cell deployment is, is currently not in the commercial mode, it's strictly in the demonstration mode, where the refueling infrastructure and the fuel cell vehicles are giving to, are, these fleets of cars are provided to various organizations and individuals on a trial basis, and data is being collected, and, and that's to promote the eventual time in the next few years where we will then see these hundreds and thousands of vehicles being deployed on a commercial basis, so. So a few hydrogen facts, currently there are billions of cubic feet of hydrogen being produced and consumed, they're used- They're used in the food processing industry. You may have heard, in welding and the electronics industry. Certainly in the refining industry, it's used on a large scale. We have hydrocrackers and fluid cat crackers in refineries that use hydrogen as part of that process to manufacture gasoline. And we've been doing that for decades. So hydrogen production and handling is nothing new. And now it's being used in the demonstration program as a fuel source for fuel cell vehicles. A lot of people like to understand hydrogen as a fuel, so we talk about a gallon of gasoline being equivalent to a kilogram of hydrogen. At our stations, typically in underground storage, you see upwards of 42,000 gallons stored in liquid form underground, okay? And the sales of a typical station is two to 300,000 gallons per month, or about 10,000 gallons a day. And a cart, as you know, typically takes about 20 gallons and it takes about five minutes to fuel it. Typically, in our demonstration projects, hydrogen is stored between 50 kilograms to 100 kilograms, which would be the equivalent of about 50 to 100 gallons of gasoline. So this just gives you a relative measure of how much hydrogen that we're actually storing and dispensing in these demonstration programs, a fraction of what our gasoline stations do. And typically, a fuel cell car needs about four kilograms on average to fill up or top off. Also, hydrogen as a fuel, we feel is no more or no less safe than gasoline. It's stored as a gas as opposed to a liquid, and so therefore, the design of the station is different. It's a, you know, hydrogen is in a sealed system as opposed to gasoline that's stored in vented tanks and dispensed into a vented, open tank. And so some of the other properties of hydrogen are that it's an extremely light molecule or substance, so if it is released into the atmosphere, it's 14 times lighter than air and it travels at a speed of 45 miles per hour straight up, okay? It's stored under pressure and it has an explosive level that it needs 49% air to be combustible. So in its pressurized storage facilities, there's a minimal chance of an explosive mixture because air is absent from a pressurized system.
Jim, you might want to speed it up a bit. You're going to run out of time here, I think, if you don't.
The fuel cell vehicles, they're not an internal combustion engine. Basically, the fuel cell came out of the space program. It uses a fuel cell to combine hydrogen and oxygen to manufacture electricity, and therefore, it is an electric vehicle. One of the advantages is that it's two to three times more efficient than the internal combustion engine, and so this makes it attractive as a fuel. There's the new Honda Clarity in the lower left. It's a ground-up fuel cell car. These cars have to compete with internal combustion engine cars, so they have a range and a drivability similar to internal combustion engine cars. And environmentally, they emit pure water vapor and a little bit of heat. And the refueling process takes just a few minutes. The Newport Beach Station, I don't know if most of you have been by there, but we're going to integrate a hydrogen dispenser, which is shown as that dispenser on the right side. And behind it, in the parking area, will be the equipment where we will receive natural gas and we will produce hydrogen and compress it and store it and dispense it. It's designed to produce about 100 kilograms, or that 100 gasoline gallons equivalent per day. There'll be about 20 to 30 fuel cell vehicles that will fuel here. It's, as I said, the hydrogen's produced on-site. It's all built according to the National Fire Protection Association Regulations, NFPA 52 and 55, which regulate this process, and it's all monitored and it's all contained and it's pressurized and sealed in the system. That, on the right side, will be the CMU wall that will enclose the equipment to compress or manufacture, compress, and store the hydrogen. Just a little bit about community outreach. We do plan to have learning centers. We have one at our current facility in West Los Angeles. We have a learning center where we bring in community groups, we bring in students, and we do have educational programs to educate the public about fuel cell vehicles, hydrogen, and the economics of it. And, let's see, we also, at our West LA station, we have a movie director that he uses it for get-togethers to talk and dialogue about alternative fuels. With that said, that's the conclusion of my presentation. I'll answer any questions.
Okay, Councilman Gardner.
Dave, was that a hydrogen vehicle that we wrote in? Yeah, okay. Very nice.
Any other questions? Now, I think we've determined that this falls under the existing use permit of the station, so there's no action required on the city other than ministerial permits. Is that correct?
I don't know if we've determined that, but we'll make sure and check.
Okay, well, that's kind of what I think you guys are under the impression of. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have submitted for permit and we have been informed that that is true, yes.
Yeah, I haven't been that close to it, but unless you hear otherwise, we'll go on that basis. But I'll double-check.
Okay. Well, it's certainly exciting technology and have something like this in Newport Beach, I think is pretty good. Any other comments, questions?
Cards under 150,000.
Yeah, well, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess I have one question. You mentioned that there would be a program of getting the vehicles out. Now, is that something that you might use a municipal agency like ours to let us test 10 or 15 vehicles for you?
If it were up to Shell, we would be happy to accommodate you. But the automakers are Honda and General Motors and Daimler, and we would have to approach them. Usually, we have representatives of the automakers here and they would address that in, or that question.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Does anyone from the audience want to address the council on this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to our next item, which is the Water Taxi Committee Report.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Mike McNamara is making the presentation because he's the one who got up first. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Just get this loaded up. You might want to take a stretch break. Thanks. Okay. Right side? Okay. Right, thank you very much.
My name is Mike McNamara, and I am the chairman of your Summer Water Taxi Exploratory Committee. We call ourselves the Water Taxi Committee for short. And I know there's a lot of material in what we sent you. I just want you to know that none of us are trying out to be congressional staffers so that we can move up to 2,000-page reports. We're satisfied with this. What I'd like to hope we can accomplish today is to introduce the committee briefly. I think we have just one member here today. Give you a brief overview of the report, talk about the findings and recommendations and conclusions, and then answer any questions. The committee is, since you pointed, I'm sure you're familiar with them, there were two from the EDC, myself and Richard Lures, John Coro, who is in the audience with the Harbor Commission, Chandler Bell, Marine Services Rep, Mark Selly, Gary, and Marine Services Rep, Gary Sherlin of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which has been renamed, and I figured our audience would know that name, and John Robinson from the Restaurant Association. And I'd like to particularly thank John Coro, who was kind of instrumental in preparing the report and worked pretty hard on it. There's been a longstanding support by the city in this planning process for a water taxi system, policy documents. In the general plan, local coastal plan, Harbor Commission, economic development have supported the project. I'll go through these quickly in view of the time that we have. But in the general plan, there's the goal of enhanced water transportation services. There's a policy 6.5 to promote opportunities to expand the water transportation or shuttle the water taxi services. And in the general plan, marine transportation, the city shall conduct a study of marine transportation services as a supplement to automobile use. In the local coastal program, the city supports the expanded use of water transportation, linking the harbor with visitors' serving and recreational destinations, providing cross-h harbor services. And the Harbor Commission has a priority action item checklist for the Harbor White Water Taxi System, and they continue to support the concept. Where I got involved in this was the Economic Development Committee developed a strategic plan for fiscal and economic sustainability, which was adopted by your council. And the goal for was to facilitate an economically viable Newport Harbor. And objective for was the city will invite proposals for implementation for privately-owned and operated water taxi system with funding supplemented by grants and private contributions and public monies. And that's what the committee was tasked to do, was to take a look at feasibility study to see if it would go... Excuse me, I'm kind of losing my voice a little bit. Research should be conducted into existing systems in Los Angeles County. From the objective, we were assigned these tasks, which is to create a tourism map, to research other water taxi systems, to develop strategies for implementation, and to prepare a feasibility report. Well, I'd like to announce that the tourism map was actually included in the harbor guide that the Harbor Department did develop, and I think you've all seen that. First thing we did was to sit down and talk about a set of goals and what we think that could be used. I think when you ask yourself, why would you want a water taxi committee? Why would you want a water taxi? If you look at the, if you look at the traffic issues and you look at the cross-h harbor issues, there's a need for it. So these were the goals that we developed. First one was to make the harbor more user-friendly for visiting boats and provide water-related service to residents and visitors. When I say user-friendly, I think if you come in as a boater, you find that you are kind of stuck where you're put, and there's not an ability to go to other areas and to go to other parts of the water system. And the same goes for people who drive in the area. If they park their car, they don't really want to move their car in the summertime to go to another area. So hopefully, making it more user-friendly. Could serve special events such as boat parades, Christmas festivals, major sailboat races, things of that nature. And be a water taxi service to residents, commuters, visitors. And one of the important things is to provide an alternative transportation system for the city that would reduce auto traffic and reduce impaired driving. So essentially, what we're saying is get the, more cars off the road and get the drunk drivers off the road. And increase revenue to the water-related businesses, more action, more... And give the operator an opportunity to turn a profit at this, as well as to provide more access to disabled persons. Our approach to the project was to take a look at the needs and market analysis, look at grants that were available, look at the route systems, vessel types, other comparable systems, and existing and potential Newport Beach docks, as well as financial estimates. There are some constraints on the study that I'd like to point out. We've titled, as you'll notice, a conceptual feasibility study. And usually, with a feasibility study, you need a level of precision and detail that requires some lengthy study, particularly in the sense of market needs and analysis. As we looked at it, we found that they kept becoming more and more circular, that if you looked at, what is the ridership? Well, it depends on what the price is. What is the price? It depends upon the cost, and it goes around and around, until somebody starts to make some decisions and say, "We're going to do three boats, we're going to do two boats, we're going to do one boat, we're going to do it such and such a manner." So we think that the operators, I've been contracted by probably a half a dozen who are interested in at least pursuing this, we think that they need to make their own estimate of demand, and ours was made based on some comparable systems. In terms of the need and market support, I think there's broad policy support from the city. That's pretty clear. I think there's some favorable interviews that we saw back in August and September when Channel 2 and Channel 9 were asking questions about water taxis, and a lot of people were very, very interested in them. And again, the same question they asked was, "What's it going to cost?" Depends. And I think, you know, our system is comparable to other systems. We looked at grants, and staff really took the lead on this one. I want to thank Katie Bowden for the work that she did on that, and Lee. But the, you can see the grants that we looked at, the Boating Infrastructure, the Tiger Grants, Recovery Act, and what was the old LST is now Safety Loop, which stands for Safe, Accountable, Flexible, Efficient Transportation Equity Act. And we've got acronyms on all of these, if you want to know. In terms of looking at the route systems, we identified three primary systems. Loop system, basically, oops? I think I hit the off button accidentally. Okay. I hit the red one.
That's right. Geez, just when you were getting to the good part, too.
It was all planned.
How about that? Is that it?
It's close enough, I can get back to it.
Can only go forward.
Okay. Okay. In terms of the route systems, I was going to do a circle on the screen and show you a harbor chart. I'll show you that in just a minute. But the loop systems basically connect several stops around a large, complex area. Usually, generally has two boats moving in opposite directions so that you have the full coverage. Marina Del Rey, Fort Lauderdale, they're examples. Sometimes they have dock agents that are on the docks. That allows them to skip the empty stops. If there's no one waiting, they can move on to the next stop. And loop route is kind of what we're thinking about, might make some sense here. Second one is the point-to-point, which normally connects two or three stops with docks on opposite sides or ends of the water area. Examples, again, would be the Balboa Ferry with very flexible schedule, or the Santa Barbara Water Taxi with published time schedule, that the owner there says you can set your watch by their departures. Vessel type, there's three basic types that we found as we researched these. There's essentially 18 to 28 passenger, tend to be used on loop routes. The peak-use vessels of 39, 30 to 90 are used for peak performance. If you have a concert or something like that going on or a major event, that you'll need extra space. And for a point-to-point, and so this would be used as to... And for a point-to-point, and so this would be used as to supplement the other water taxis. Small vessels, eight to 12 passengers, basically on-call type, maybe the Duffy's, the Lear's, things of that nature. So we looked at these selected systems for comparison, and as you can see, there's seven of them, they're mostly Southern California, except for San Diego and Fort Lauderdale. And you'll find, this is the selected systems. On page 14 or page 56 of your report, there's a... This chart exists there, and you can see... One of the issues that keeps coming up is the issue of subsidy. And as you can see, in this instance, two of them don't have subsidy. One is the Newport Harbor Ferry, and the other is the Santa Barbara Harbor. The rest of them have had subsidies or continue to get some type of subsidies, generally of a transportation-type of grant, they consider it as part of the extension of the transportation system. Santa Barbara is kind of an interesting system, they have kind of a character boat, Little Toot, and it sprouts bubbles instead of oil and that sort of thing. But if the system is profitable, they have a basic fee revenue. What he said, it took about two, three years to start to break even. And when he started with the basic fee revenue, that's the rates tended to break even at that point. And he said he worked cooperatively with the city to do some other services which made the difference and brought him a profit. So at just the basic fare box, he was breaking even. When he added other things, and other services would be like charters, sale of merchandise, caps, shirts, things of that nature, sale of liquor, food and beverages, and dinner cruises. And this is what turned the tide with his business up there. We took Marina Del Rey that has a lot of similarities to our harbor, and I'll show you a little chart of it here in a second. And it has a large current demand, currently for their most recent season, 40,000 to 50,000 users, and that would be anyone who took one segment of the ride. They have four boats that handle 24 people, and then they have one boat for peaking, which holds 80 people. Now, they have a very short season, they do June 27th to September 1st, but it's only Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And of course, they'll do holidays, July 4th and Labor Day, and they'll do the concerts, they put on four concerts in Burton Chase Park there, they do that. They use a loop route with on-call routes, and they have really no dead ends or any need to backtrack. But Marina Del Rey also has a lot of differences. They received this year a subsidy of up to $300,000, and they have a fare of $1. So very high subsidy, very low fare.
That subsidy, in the report, did it say that was from LA County?
I believe it was some pass-through from LA County, I'm not exactly sure of the exact source of it, but I think the county is the...
But not the city of Marina Del Rey?
No. In fact, I think that's unincorporated, isn't it?
Oh, that's... Yeah. Okay.
I don't think there's a city. It is a county operation and county harbor.
Okay.
One of the things is they have much shorter travel distances, they have about a one-mile length, and if you take the length of our harbors, it's about two and a half miles. So it's quite a bit different in terms of the size of it. They also have no high-volume point-to-point demand like the ferry, but they are very highly publicized, the Chamber of Commerce, the county, a number of agencies have gotten in there and helped publicize this. This is what the harbor looks like, and if I can point on this without turning it off, I'll be in good shape. If you take from point one here, you can see that they moved to two, three, four, five, six, seven. And so they have some boats going around in this direction, they have some boats going around in this direction. And if there's nobody at a particular stop, they can bypass it. So this is kind of a modified system. It's a hybrid system. The city has existing, right now, they have 10 existing docks, they have six potential docks under development, they have eight docks and dining restaurants that are part of the Dock and Dine Program in the Harbor Guide, and dozens of private commercial docks, and thousands of residential docks. City public docks, as you probably know, the docks are defined by the name of the street that ends at the water. So you have M Street, Washington Street, Fernando Street, 15th Street. So just if I can point out these, where those docks are. If you start down here, this is M Street Dock. It's about as far to the way as you can get. And again, the distance from here to the back of the harbor is about two and a half miles. Here's the fun zone, and that's Washington Street Dock, and then about three blocks up is Fernando Street. This is American Legion and 15th Street Dock, and then up here is 19th Street Dock, this is where the marina will be. The other docks are Coral Avenue, Opal Avenue, Emerald Avenue, Sapphire and Park Avenue, and I'll show you those in a second. But we have two other public docks, the Balboa Bay Club and the Dunes have both indicated a willingness to be used as public docks for starts. The Dunes has said they'd be willing to do it on a trial basis and see how it works. Did it again. Sorry, I know I've got one, and then there's a down, there we go. I think we're good. And so you can see the... Oops. There we go. This is the... I'm going to turn the light on now. And there we go. Okay, so this is Coral Street, and then we go up to, let's see, it's Opal Sapphire and block on that one, and this is Park Avenue. Park Street is probably the closest to the Marine Avenue, which has all of the businesses on it. This is what a typical city dock looks like. They're not very large, and as you can see, they're all, they have these particular objects here. I thought they were blue balls, but I'm informed they're finial, which is the cap on a unique spider or something of this nature. So look it up, finial's a fun one. This would be the dock right now in the fun zone, as you can see, not a large dock, does have dinghies attached to it. There's a number of future potential docks that the city might, that is thinking about, has plans or may have plans in the future. Balboa Yacht Basin, we think some of the things could be done there with very minor changes with what you have now. The Rhine Wharf is 2010, is supposed to be in place. Lower Castaways is probably beyond 2010. Marina Park, I guess, is beyond 2010, I'm not sure we have a schedule yet for that. Central Avenue Street and the Lido Bridge Dock. And again, we can go through these if you like. Let me just move along to speed it up. There are also restaurants that have what they call dine and dock, and this is a list of the restaurants and where they're located roughly. And they've all said, bring your boats, come and dock at our docks and have dinner with us. So we think these are good candidates, too. So when we look at the primary and secondary destinations, this is the slide in this, the primary and secondary. And then the places that water taxi could potentially pick up and let off on an on-call basis, and you can see the... The primary destinations would be Mariners Mile, Lido Village, Lower Rhine, Marina Park, Bay Avenue, Balboa Village, and the Dunes. And then the secondary destinations would be all of the moorings, the anchorages, the yacht clubs, private marinas, harbor master's office, beachfront offices, ocean beaches, and just goes on and on and on. So you have a plethora of docks that could potentially be used for this. We took a look at the financial estimates, and this got a little tricky here. The initial operating season, we estimated about 8,000 to 10,000 riders. The second operating season, we estimated it would be in the range of 15,000 to 20,000 riders. And the third operation was in a range of 25,000 plus. And this is based on some comparables with Marina Del Rey, which definitely has different characteristics. In terms of the financial estimates, the potential operator probably would need somewhere in the neighborhood of 200,000 to 300,000 to capitalize this. But when we look at this, it really varies because some of the operators have existing docks, they have existing boats, or the manufacturers of boats. So it would be very difficult for us to specify what this would be, it would depend upon the situation. The city, just to do signage and to do their part of this and putting it together, we estimate about 50,000 or 60,000 in terms of out-of-market costs. So we were unable to construct a pro forma because of the number of variables in this. And we'd just like to emphasize, we think the prospective water taxi operators need to perform their own estimates on ridership, revenue, these sort of things. To help with that, we developed three concepts in the back, if you had a chance to look at this. A basic system, limited to one season, very simple, an expanded system, and an on-call-only system. So in conclusion, we came to the conclusion that the Newport Harbor Water Taxi appears to be conceptually feasible. Number two, the government grant and loan money is not currently available, and so we're not recommending a subsidy now. And recommend the city provide in-kind support, city docks, signage, staff, perhaps some fee waivers, approval of operator supplemental revenue sources. But we think it's essential to test the market to see what we could bring in, what is someone willing to put up in terms of their capital if you want to proceed ahead on this. So our recommendations are to review it in a study session today, as you're doing. And if you approve, refer to the EDC and to the Harbor Commission and ask them for a quick turnaround. Staff to begin the preparation of the RFP, and staff to return within 60 days to the city council. And then if you designate a 30-day RFP period and a 60-day evaluation time, it looks like you could possibly do a 2010. It's going to be difficult, it's going to be a challenge if you want to go for it. But our recommendation is to pursue a 210 pilot program if possible, and a 211 if necessary. With that, I'd like to thank staff very much for their help in answering questions.
Councilman Gardner?
I had a couple of questions. One is that in reading the report, I felt that there wasn't a clear distinction between taxi service and a tour. I mean, Santa Barbara seems to be more of a tour, and we were using that as one example. And I would be very concerned about using any public docks and everything for something that was competing with existing businesses in terms of a tour, because we already have boats that give harbor tours. So that's something I'd like to see clarified in a second version of it. And secondly, I was a little bit concerned about the conversations on lower castaways. One is that I hope we can come up with a better plan for it than a parking lot for the taxi service. I mean, that seems to me to take a beautiful piece of property and not give it a very high usage. And then I also wondered if this were, was a parking lot for a for-profit business, doesn't that violate the terms of our agreement? Aren't we, doesn't have to be used for a nonprofit, only public use with the Irvine Company?
You're talking about castaways?
Yeah, lower castaways.
I don't remember for sure, but I think you're right.
Okay. Anyway, as I say, I would be concerned about that as a parking lot. And I also wonder if particularly initially, we would want to go that far back into the bay, whether a pilot program wouldn't be better off just concentrating on the lower harbor from the bridge up.
If I may respond, if you'd like me to. In terms of the tours, what we found in our research is that most of the operators up and down the coast, they do do tours, and usually they're limited to out of their regular hours. For example, the Santa Barbara has hours from noon to 6:00 PM, and then they do tours. In the summertime, they have longer hours. In terms of lower castaways, there are other options, but we were trying to find an easy option in terms of if you were going to do a 60-day type of trial period, that sort of thing, something you could use some temporary docks for right away. The Dunes has indicated they have some space in terms of on-water and on-land storage for boats. So that certainly would be, as far as gift to public funds, I think I'll leave that to your city attorney.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, Mike, I want to commend you and the committee for, I think, doing a very professional and comprehensive job on this report. It's really got a lot of great information in it, I think you really looked at a lot of comparable systems, and it scoped out a lot of good ideas. As somebody who used to be a waterborne commuter in the San Francisco Bay Area, I will tell you that waterborne transportation is among the most heavily subsidized in America. It's also the best commute in America. I don't know that we would have many commuters here, but it was, it takes a lot of money. So I think maybe an RFP might not be a bad idea, but I think it's going to be very difficult for somebody to make it pencil. The OCTA has got funds available for circulator systems. It remains to be seen whether this might qualify under that definition, that might be a potential funding source. I can't really see the city putting a lot of money into this, but to the extent that there's a sentiment to test the waters, so to speak, on this, you know, I'd be supportive of that. But I think we need to be pretty mindful about the economics, which are likely to be very challenging here.
Councilman Hen?
Mike, I'd like to add my congratulations to you and the committee. This is, this report was far more informational and in-depth than I was expecting that we would see. It was really a comprehensive treatment, so thank you. With regard to the proposal, though, to do a pilot system, isn't that going to be kind of hard to attract in an RFP, somebody to put up the capital for a one-season pilot? How do you get past that? I don't understand how a business would even respond on that.
I think, I think conceptually, if you want me to deal with it. I think the trade-off is if you have someone that's willing to try it for the first season, they would be looking for some add-on times. And so if you said you're going to sink some money in it, you might say, in effect, you can go back to second, third, maybe up to the fifth, or something of that nature. And I think that's the quid pro quo, the use of the docks, which is using something that's not usually used for commercial purposes, and the ability to continue back and as it grows, I think this is a growing thing. I think Councilman Curry's right, in terms of up and down the coast, it is heavily subsidized. And so I don't know if they could make a go of it. The Balboa Ferry has been existence with the same family for 90 years, and I think, you know, they do make profit at it, and I think they've been good stewards, and that's why the city has continued that. So I think that would be the trade-off, if you get somebody to pony up their contribution. Some of the motivations, I think, too, are contacted by people who actually manufacture boats, who sell boats. As you know, Hornblower is the operator, maybe you don't know, of the Marina Del Rey operation. And they, but they're in our harbor here. We have, and I haven't talked to Hornblower per se, but I have talked to other operators that are interested. And I think a lot of people probably didn't realize the scope in terms of what it's going to take. But we offered up those three options, just as a way to get our arms around, here's a place to start. I think any RFP would be helpful if we basically said, here's the parameters, and they're relatively loose, what can you give us? And I think we'd find different options. I have talked to people who had different ideas in terms of the work, the flow, the cross-harbor traffic, and so they'd like to take a shot at it. I think there are people willing to do it, but it's kind of like the Etzel, I guess, if you do a really good study, you know, did it make sense? Yep. But did it sell? Nope. So who knows?
Well, for myself, I would like to take this a step further and have the Harbor Commission and the EDC have a look at your work and see how that yields a different result. And I think it would be worthwhile, though, in that process, to test the water a little bit with some potential operators, discussing how they might go about this on either a pilot basis or a limited three-year test, if you will. It's just hard for me to imagine that, and I would like to see, coming out of that further evaluation, a better refinement of how you would go about an RFP that might actually draw some interest.
And I will say, that was one of the first reactions I got to us when we talked about it. One of the potential vendors basically said, rather than stop it after 60 days, I'd like to take it through the winter. And there's not much traffic during the winter, but he felt it was important to stay with it and keep it going. So we'll see.
Councilman Tagle?
Yes, certainly appreciate the volunteerism and dedication that went into working on this, and I thought your comments are really realistic. I mean, if you didn't know, you said, you know, we don't simply know that at this point. So I think testing the market is good to reveal what other challenges or imperfections are out there, and then, you know, where it might be appropriate for the city to step in. One of the questions that I have is, what challenges do you see as far as the geography of our harbor and the speed limit? I mean, one popular route could be the Dunes to the Rhine Wharf area, and I mean, how would you sort of go about the travel times and...
Okay, let me just get back to the chart here. That's probably one of the toughest nuts, and we have a lot of diagrams in the report, which this may look like it's a big presentation, but from here to here, it's two and a half miles. miles at five knots, so you're half an hour either way. I think the consensus on the committee was people will wait for a shuttle or bus or something like that for 15 minutes, probably not much more than that. So in order to get a 15-minute head time, you'd almost need to be doing a, one boat up here in this direction, one in this direction, and that would be two, one there, possibly one down this way doing the same thing, and then some crossover. That would be, conceptually, I think, something that would make sense, because then you could get to any place within 15 minutes, and that's not including boarding time, and it also is not including stop, if you stop in some of the mooring areas and things of that nature. I don't know if I'm addressing your question or not, but the five mile an hour speed limit is a big issue. In, for example, Long Beach, they have a system, and they have no speed limit in their harbor, because it's basically just behind the breakwater. But most places, Marina Del Rey, I'm sure has a speed limit.
Any other comments, questions? I would just echo what Mayor Pro Tim Curry said about the, something like this really is going to need some subsidy to operate. I just don't see it being feasible for a private operator to come in and operate this. So there's going to have to be some subsidy, in my opinion, to actually make it work. Have you talked to, like, any of the businesses on the harbor as far as their willingness to participate in some kind of program to help this out?
John Robinson was here. He actually was our point person on talking, like, to the restaurants. I think their basic response is, number one, we've heard this before and other people have tried, and we did look into some of the failures and what happened. And I think number two is, you know, we don't want people to come and park in our lot, get on a boat, and then go off to some other place, because we don't have enough parking now. So those were the two concerns. So I think they were, from the restaurants, they were, I would say, skeptical, to be honest. And we didn't talk, I have talked to manufacturers of boats, dealers of boats, things of that nature, and they, they expressed some interest, but I can't gauge it, you know, how real it is. So, but we did have a chamber representative with Richard Lours, and I think, you know, not to speak for Richard, but I think he was thinking it probably was going to need a subsidy, too.
Well, like the others have said, I think it's a good report, you did a lot of hard work on it, and I certainly think it's worth taking the next step and see what can develop out of it. Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience want to comment? Please come forward. State your name, please.
My name's Jack Tingley. Excellent, can't wait for it to happen. One of the things that I run into when I'm in the harbor is the existing uses of the docks. Fishing, and they do not move for you. Pump outs, especially at 15th Street, dinghy parking, and restroom stops. So this needs to be a part of all what the city is going to require, and I'm sure we're going to run into some ordinance problems, but would hope all that be taken into consideration, and love to see it this summer. The other part of it is, is I came for the earlier presentation for the Recreation Department, and I congratulate them. We would love to be able to have the use of this with the recreation groups that are in and about the harbor area, so they could go and use the facilities of the city in a more efficient manner. So that would be a nice thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Mahoney. I own and operate the gondola service out of Lido Village, and approximately eight years ago, I rebuilt a 34-foot launch, and I do run water taxi service on an on-call basis. And I'll give you a picture there. And I'll tell you some of my experience. Our main business for this particular craft is small parties harbor cruises, but we do use it for water taxi service on an on-call basis, mainly from places like the Balboa Bay Club, when you have 15 or 20 people that want to go to the cannery or another restaurant. We do get calls periodically from people on the mooring cans, and we'll send a smaller boat out, but it's expensive. You need to have a Coast Guard licensed operator, and when you take more than six people, you need a boat that's, has a certificate of inspection from the Coast Guard. And as you mentioned earlier, the time to travel up and down the bay is so long that it's, it's not profitable, although we certainly would like to see it, but it would need to be subsidized.
Mayor, City Council. My name is Scott Smith, and I'm with Lear Electric Boats here in Newport Beach. I had the opportunity to talk to Mike regarding his study, and found his questions not only thorough, but very realistic. I believe the report is thin, however, in terms of the costs of operating a system like this and the initial investment. And as a fellow San Francisco Bay commuter on the ferries, I can tell you the cost of operating a commercial system, particularly with regard to having wheelchair accessibility, et cetera, is probably twice as much as it would be without wheelchair accessibility in that one topic alone. As the previous gentleman stated, it requires a captain's license to operate a boat commercially. The service as a three-month service here in Newport Harbor would be an extraordinary uphill challenge. It would have to be an eight-to-nine month service to even be feasible, and it would require some subsidy. After I talked to Mike, I went back to Annapolis, Maryland, and Baltimore, and reviewed their water taxi systems, as well as Fort Lauderdale and Sarasota, Florida, all in the last 60 days. I looked at their current numbers, and have been a passenger and user of water taxi services for most of my 57 years, in a variety of areas around the country. So I'm fairly clear on the realities of them. Lear Boats will put together a RFP, or, excuse me, will answer any RFP, and look forward to this service coming to bear here in the community. As a Newport Harbor High School student in the '60s, I've always wanted to see a water taxi service here in our community. In a test, you're looking at $300,000 to $400,000 in investment and operating, and if you want a serious system that's used around the country, you're looking at somewhere between 1.4 and 1.8 million in an initial investment, and operating capital per year of about $350,000. So those are ballpark numbers. I have more specific notes, and we'll put those in any RFP answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the counsel on this issue? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on to our next item, which is number five, creation of a Charter Update Commission. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you. I will attempt to move this fairly quickly. At last council meeting, the idea came up that we consider, the council considered creating a Charter Update Commission. Our charter was adopted in January of 1955, subsequent ordinances such as the Civil Service Ordinance was adopted in 1958. Thus the charter, and, for example, the Civil Service Ordinance are over 50 years old. There have been substantial changes in law since that time. There are aspects of our charter that are just plain unenforceable, and there are aspects of our, say, for example, Civil Service Ordinance that are inconsistent with current practice and public entity personnel issues. So in response to the thoughts by the council, we put together a potential timeline along with a number of lists that's been presented to the council. The timeline recognizes that we have to bring any recommendation by this council to the general election in November of next year, so we have a very abbreviated timeline. The list was taken, been put together by staff. Essentially, I sent out an email to department heads and requested if they had recommendations or thoughts that they felt could be addressed in this context. And so we broke those thoughts down into a number of different categories, trying to stay at issues that are really essentially update, cleanup issues, modernization, and efficiency types of issues. We did categorize one potential policy issue regarding appointment to a vacant, just to review the policies regarding appointment to vacant council seats. That's been something that's been hanging on to be potentially addressed since the summertime, and it was a recommendation by Councilmember Gardner that perhaps we include that on that list for the council direction. What we anticipate today, if the council wishes to proceed forwards, is for you to answer a few questions for us. One is, do you wish to proceed forward? Two is, is this timeframe adequate for you? Three is, are these the types of issues you wish the commission to address? Are there other issues you wish, and probably most importantly, do you wish to have it to be a limited scope of issues for the commission to address? And then, how large would you like the commission to be? And then, with that direction, we will bring back a resolution formulating the commission addressing the issue of appointment of a subcommittee to interview applicants, and have that ready for you at your next council meeting. We're moving this quickly, because there are very few dates left open between now and when it has to go on to the election that would allow for substantive review. Do you have any questions? I'll be happy to address them.
Councilman Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked for this item to, I guess, be brought forward, and I think that staff has done a good job in outlining the kinds of issues that need to be addressed to bring our charter up to conformity with current practice and with the current state of state law. Because these have to be voted on in the November election, I think it's important that we involve, for purposes of transparency and for citizen input, a commission that represents active and involved citizens that have an opportunity to apply to do this. And so I would, number one, support that recommendation. I think the timetable that's outlined here is appropriate. I think the commission ought to be charged with dealing with the types of issues that David has outlined here, but if they come up with something else, the council has the ultimate authority to decide what actually goes on the ballot. So I think that continues to reside here. I would hope that we'd appoint people who would not get carried away here. And what else did you need, David?
How many, how many would you like on the commission? We'll bring that back to you, and do you want a subcommittee to be appointed at your next?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Webb?
I think that as far as the number of people are concerned, I think it's extremely important, based on the original charter was kind of as a result of there being a bunch of community cliques that had occurred over the years. So I think that if we do, in putting the commission together, that we need to make sure that all seven districts are represented, and I would suggest that we have at least two members from seven districts, which would bring it to a total of 14. Now, as my beginning toss-out, and let's discuss a number.
Boy, I think, I think 15, really, you start complicating, getting the work done within the time schedule that's allocated here.
This is, this is a complicated item, and I think that one of the things that we want to make sure is that all, that all parts of the city are equally representative.
And all perspectives.
And all perspectives.
Councilman Tagle?
I'm not sure you can do that with seven people.
I have a little different perspective. I mean, I may share that perspective, but on your sale of bayfront property, as we talked about, there are some yacht clubs that don't own the property, and they may have an interest in a purchase, those small pieces of land. Is that something that we could accommodate within this provision?
At present, the charter forbids any sale of bayfront property, but it's been routinely modified based upon subsequent votes. So what we would foresee is the commission addressing that issue and perhaps creating a procedure in which other folks can purchase bayfront property that's consistent with the intent of the voters who originally adopted the charter. So yes, I believe it can, but it really depends on what your commission will ultimately recommend.
Okay.
And pieces have been purchased, but it requires an election item. Like, for instance, there's a piece out on 42nd Street or 43rd Street that was sold, but it was an item that had to be taken to the ballot.
Right. And there are complications potentially with coastal lack in Thailand, but we're not talking about actual Thailand's that we're holding in trust, so...
But if you were willing, if there was a possibility of relaxing the language within the charter, then we wouldn't have to do these one-by-one elections.
That's kind of the concept.
Right.
Trying to make it efficient. We're not, by looking at the list of potential issues that we brought to you, we were not bringing large policy issues to you. If you wish to address those, they certainly can, but doing that in the six-month period of time would be extraordinarily difficult. Probably the most complex issue here that's been brought to you relates to the civil service system and what types of changes to modernize the civil service system would be appropriate. Some of the other things are very straightforward. The city manager residency requirement is flat out unconstitutional, so how would he modify it in order to make it constitutional? That stuff's fairly straightforward, you get more complicated in the, when you go to modernization or policy issues.
Thank you. Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I'm in favor of keeping the list fairly tight here. Otherwise, you could just mushroom into something that would be completely untenable, and especially in this timeframe. And because the list is fairly tight, and mostly concerned with cleanup items, other than the Civil Service Board and the council appointment, vacancy appointment issue, I'm less concerned about having a large group on the committee. Large groups, it's hard to find dates that they can, that enough people can meet, it's just, it's just a, it makes it a much tougher, more unwieldy process question, the larger the group gets. And most of the time, anyway, it resolves down to a tight group of people who are really willing to put the energy and time into it. I do agree that it would be a good idea to have the seven districts represented, I would support that. But other than that, I would much prefer to have this a tight group. A short, short number, a smaller number as we can on this.
Councilman Rosansky?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, like, if we are limiting it to this sort of a list that we have here, I don't know that there's that fractionalization that Don's worried about. I mean, if we, you, Keith had mentioned something about, well, them generating other issues to come up with. At that point, then, I would be concerned. And so I'm looking at more, I mean, coming up with the scope of them, letting them work it out, and then doing it that. So I don't, I don't want to have some free-ranging charter commission that's just going to go off on its own. And along those lines, I kind of like the model that we use for the building, or, sorry, the design review committee for the City Hall project, where we had a, well, actually, in that case, three council members, non-voting council members were appointed to the committee to just attend and be there in case, you know, there was questions or things like that. So I'd be in favor of at least one or two council members being appointed to the committee as non-voting members, but still to attend the meetings and lend whatever support they could to the committee from that standpoint.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
Well, I'd be amenable to Steve's suggestion, having a councilman or two be a non-voting member of the committee as well. I think the smaller group is better, and I think if we can draw this in such a way as to give them the flexibility to rec, you know, it's a citizens' committee to recommend back to the council, so I want to give them the flexibility to recommend, but let's, you know, if we can tailor it to specific issues, I think that's a good thing to do. Since we do the appointments to the committee, the council will decide the geographic dispersion and the makeup of the appointees, and so that's like we do with all of our commissions, and I think we're fully capable of doing that without, you know, doing all of that in advance now.
We could bring, as far as the flexibility of issues, we could set it up so that the council designates issues at this point, and then tells the committee that if it wishes to review any further issues, that they make the recommendation before engaging in that. Bring it back to the council, and have you approve whether or not you think it's appropriate for them to do so. So far, I would, I would imagine that perhaps in the February meetings, they would make a decision, if they wanted to look at something else, we'd bring it to you. If you okayed it, they would. That way, you could keep control over, you would allow them to make recommendations, but since it's such a tight timeframe, we'd avoid getting into too deep of policy issues that could potentially impact the concerns that have been mentioned by council tonight.
I think that's, that's a good idea, and hopefully whoever the council liaison is will play a role, and they'll be constructive in that regard as well.
Councilman Gardner?
Well, yes, if it's going to be, I agree with Councilwoman Rosansky. If it's going to be very tightly focused, as it seems to be, then a small committee is acceptable. But I'm very much with Councilwoman Webb, that if we start to get into big policy issues, then it must, the committee would have to be expanded, it seems to me, to bring in a wider perspective. But if we are going to tailor it as it is here, then I can go But if we are going to tailor it as it is here, then I can go along with the smaller one.
Okay. Any other comments? Think you have enough direction out of that, or did we just confuse you?
I believe we can model something for you and have it ready for your agenda. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, do you want to talk briefly about that? There's an additional item that I thought you should be on the list.
There was an item that was brought up this morning in talking with the mayor, and it's been brought up in other contexts regarding oil drilling. Our charter, section 1401, deals with oil well drilling. It essentially restricts oil well drilling to those properties that had oil well drilling on them at the time of the adoption of the charter in 1955 and subsequently in 1958 amendments. That may be an issue based upon some thoughts on the oil, on the oil fields and stuff that would be appropriate to look at, just to see if it wishes to be modified. We're not making a recommendation. We're just talking about, is this something the council would like to have at least looked at and brought to you for potential recommendation?
Okay, Councilman Webb?
I strongly support that. I think that we need to make sure that whatever we do is clear, that when we annex the Banning Ranch area, that we aren't creating a charter impediment to their restructuring their oil production within the annexed area, which would keep perhaps islands still in the county where we can, otherwise, we might be able to get it back in the city as long as we were not over-restrictive in that standpoint.
However, along those lines, because there were some emails back and forth with Sharon about this issue, and she sent over the language that was in the charter currently, and actually, I'd prefer to have, before we task that to this committee, an analysis of the city attorney's office as to what the potential impact would be on oil drilling on the Banning Ranch property, not just the Banning wells, but the city has wells there too, in the event that we did annex that property. I mean, there may be, as I read it, I think we, they, oil drilling can continue if that property is annexed into the city, because it seemed to fit within the language that's already in the charter. So I don't know that we would necessarily want to mess with that language. So I'd like to have a full analysis of that.
And I would anticipate that, first of all, my office would be, our office would be directly involved, and frankly, I would anticipate attending every one of the meetings, that I wasn't prevented from attending. And we can prepare that analysis. I can't do it before December 8th, but the council can subsequently delegate as well if it chooses. We can look at that, and we can certainly have an analysis for you by your first meeting in January, if you wish to see that.
Councilman Hen, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm also in agreement that we need to address the issue of oil drilling. I hadn't really focused on the Banning Ranch portion of those issues, but I could also picture where we need to at least be able to have more flexibility in how we manage the city-owned oil drilling operations that are already there, have been there forever. We have reason to believe that there's real opportunity for the city to extend its revenue-producing capabilities if it can operate in a more flexible way, and I'd like to, I'd like to see what flexibility we could or should introduce to allow that. I would want to make it very clear along the way that we're not talking about expanding the ability to drill for oil in other locations in our city or offshore. There's none of that. We don't want to, we don't want to have a, some sort of an incendiary issue here. I think we're talking about a limited set of issues having to do with oil drilling. That includes both city flexibility for its fields and then the implications relating to Banning Ranch.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Then we'll move on to our, oh, public comments on this. Any public comments? Not seeing any. Move on to our last item, which is the status of the oil easement issue, staying in the oil theme here.
Speaking of oil, yes. Mr. Mayor, council members, this is a discussion brought back to you in light of, I guess, I, Councilmember Rosansky's request, at least a couple of years ago, or 18 months ago now, to correct some administrative problems relating to the subsurface pass-through agreements that we have, primarily there in the oil well field that is right next to Cappy's Restaurant. And remember, for the public certification, these are slant drilled. The lines go directly out to the ocean, far deep in the ground. I think there's about 16 of them, and we've been paying a stipend, a small amount of money to the property owners under which those pipes go, to compensate them for the use of their land. And Glenn Evrod is going to talk about what we've done since that time, and then some ideas for the future to hopefully correct some of the administrative errors that we made in the past. So with that, Glenn.
Thank you, Dave. Mayor Selick, council members, the subsurface pass-through agreements, AKA slant well agreements, I want to provide you just a little bit of an overview on Dave's touch on most of the highlights there. Update you on the progress that we've made since late last year when this became an issue, and describe some of the challenges associated with these pass-through agreements, and propose a plan going forward to resolve many of the issues that we have associated with these agreements. These easements, as Dave mentioned, are for oil drilling pass-through and production. These lines run underneath about 192 properties. There are 146 agreements dating back to 1981. None of these agreements dating back to 1981 have been renegotiated. The city pays a percentage of the oil revenues to the parcel owners on a semi-annual basis in January and July, and these properties are located in West Newport. This map depicts, this aerial depicts the two areas with the properties associated with the slant well easements. Twice-a-year payments are calculated based on the percentage of the grantor's property relative to the total square footage to those two areas that we just depicted, multiplied by the market value, or 3.275% of the market value of all oil, gas, and other substances produced during the period. The city makes semi-annual payments. They range from about $18.38 to $221 per parcel per payment, these semi-annual payments. Last, this year, so far, we've paid $39,000. I'd love to be able to tell you specifically how much this is year to year. We don't have that information. The city paid an average of $111 this year for those payments. So we're not talking about a lot of money. Easements, according to the agreements, run with the land, but under the terms of the agreements, the city's obligated to pay the grantor named in these easement agreements, unless we're notified by the grantor of a new grantor that should be providing these payments.
Is it just the grantor? The grantee can come in and just say, I bought the property and give me the oil?
Any notification, we will confirm that they are the fee-based owner of the parcel, and they'll receive the payment.
Very good.
Problem is, nobody makes these contacts to us and lets us know that they are new owners, subject to these payments. They're often not disclosed through escrow, and so most often, the new parcel owners have no idea that.
Well, it should appear on their title report, but they probably just don't look at it that closely.
May indeed. Many of the parcels, complicating this, have been subdivided, and that's created a significant amount of confusion about who's still subject to it, because again, these have not, we didn't, when we, when these subdivisions were done, there were no new agreements executed for these subdivided parcels. Some owners have claimed that they continue to enjoy the easement rights with the sale of their property. New owners want payments retroactive to the date of ownership, and there was a period of time that the city ceased making payments in 2007, and while they're trying to sort out where this stood, and so for a year and a half or so, payments were not made to any of these particular properties. Although we're not obligated to by the agreement, we've tried to recover, with some success, payments made to previous owners that had sold the property on behalf of the current owners, and we were successful in some regards, but not entirely successful. The Office of the City Attorney has analyzed five or six of the claims made by former property owners that they continue to enjoy the easement rights pursuant to the sale of the property. One owner, back in 1981, actually asked to have a permanent easement on a one-time payment, so we don't have a one-time agreement with that particular owner, which has greatly simplified our administration of those payments. We have 38 owners who are grantors, the original grantors, who are still parcel owners in the subject area. We have 108 owners that are paid by the city, even though they don't have easement agreements, they're not named grantors in the agreements, because they are the current parcel owners, and the previous owners did not appear to reserve the right to those easements. Eighteen current parcel owners must pursue payments from the previous parcel owners. So in September, October, November, the city transmitted letters to about 27 former property owners who had been erroneously receiving these payments. 16 of those owners repaid the amounts to the city, and we've advanced those payments this week to the new parcel owners. 11 of the previous parcel owners did not return the money, and we've directed those parcel owners to communicate with the former parcel owners to obtain that payment. Again, four, and the number ranges somewhere between four and six, we think, previous parcel owners who have claimed to have reserved their easement rights, and we're currently reviewing that situation. We found that there's a lot of issues associated with these agreements, and we'd like to propose the outright purchase of these agreements to alleviate the administrative issues that we've seen, minimize the city's potential liability in the future, and to clean the title record for these properties in the city, and maintain the city's easements rights for these parcels. We'd like to hire an appraiser to evaluate the easement values and return to council for some direction on purchasing these easements outright, once we've identified what the values might be through the appraisal effort. Purchase the agreements for those that are willing to sell, and then those that aren't willing to sell, update these agreements to clarify many of the issues that are not clear in these 1980s vintage agreements. We've contacted one appraiser, and these are not, these slant well easements are not something typically appraised, so we spent some time finding an appraiser who could even offer us a quote on this. We did find one such appraiser, and he's identified two approaches to this appraisal effort. The cost would be about $200 per parcel, $38,000 for all, or, excuse me, he's proposing to review one parcel easement and provide a restricted appraisal report where he would provide the value of the easement and a methodology that we could apply for the remaining parcels, based on previous payments, square footage, et cetera. The cost the appraiser had estimated on that was $3,000. Again, we've only spoken to one appraiser. We're not proposing to necessarily go with that one appraiser, but we thought that some idea of what the cost for this appraisal effort might be valuable in your consideration of how we proceed. With that, I'll try to answer questions. I'll be candid with you, we inherited this responsibility about four months ago. There's a lot of issues associated with this, and I'll try to be as responsive as I can to any questions you might have.
Councilman Rosansky?
Thank you, Glenn, for that presentation, and I'd just like to say at the outset, I'd like to thank the city manager's office and the city attorney's offices. It was kind of a crappy job that they had to do to clear up all this, you know, administrative backlog of owners and non-owners, and who got money and who didn't. I was happy to see that we did get a number of them to give us back the money, and I was hopeful that that would happen once they got a letter from the city and a follow-up letter from the city attorney's office. As far as your recommendation there on the appraiser, I think one appraisal is, I mean, it's fungible here. I mean, they all just have easements, and they get money based upon a percentage, and I don't know that we need a separate appraisal for each parcel, unless the city attorney tells us to purchase this, we need a separate appraisal because it's some type of real estate, right? If not, he's saying no, so I would assume that the one at $3,000 is probably fair, and to the extent that we can buy these people out for a fair price, you know, why not? I mean, it just seems to be an administrative headache, which will be ongoing as these parcels turn over, and people come to us and say, well, why didn't you send the money? I mean, it's, you know, a recurring problem every 10 years or so, we'll have to be playing catch-up here. So I would recommend that, and I don't know that we need to vote on it or anything. I mean, it seems like a minimal contract, just instruction, so I'd be in favor of that.
As would I.
Yeah, well, it seems to make sense. I mean, the cost of collecting the money is probably more than the amount of the payments.
Exactly, yeah.
Any other comments on that? Okay, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public want to address the council on this?
As Glenn's closing off the computer, I want to thank Glenn for his department, his division's hard work on that, and George Murdock is here from Utilities, and George has worked hard to try to pull this together too, so it hasn't been an easy task, as Councilmember Rosansky noted, so thank you.
Okay. Anybody want to comment on any item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we adjourn to closed session.